Glad to Legion's to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Summers.
Absent.
Witt.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Absent.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a call.
Approval of minutes?
We have the minutes from April 19th, common council.
Emotion to approval of minutes. Graham Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Burr, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence?
Okay, we have one correspondence tonight. It's for a subdivision plan for 4 to 8 Franklin and 2 to 4 Union Street, and it's for a two-lot subdivision.
Forwarded planning?
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of this city, anybody who would like to address this council, please step forward.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Catherine McMenamy. I live at 19 Willow Place in Middletown. I continue to be here about the water issues running in the canal that is in the back of my home and belongs to the railroad. Today I spoke to somebody from the Orange County Health Department who said in no uncertain terms that whoever owns the property is responsible for the drainage problem in that ditch. So, the railroad owns the property. I don't know what we can do about the railroad. He did give me telephone numbers for someone at the EPA and for the Bureau for Public Outreach, which are agencies that may be able to help us in our quest to straighten out that problem. So, I hope to get in touch with somebody from those agencies and to see what happens. But with warm weather coming, of course, it is mosquitoes, West Nile virus, Zika, whatever else is out there. So, I know the city has done what they can to help to clean up that drainage situation, but we honestly feel that there's more to be done. So, that's what we work for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
Hi, so I'm Bob Dietrich from Chestnut Street 14, but also from Orange County Department of Health. When we had the cleanup day a couple of weeks ago, we have in the Orange County Department of Health, we have compost bins that we could distribute to residents of the county. We still have a few that are unspoken for. If anyone would like a compost bin for their home, it would help them with their gardens and their plants, you could call me or Linda Jansen, who's another part of our health department. And the phone number you can call is 360-6680. And what we're gonna do is, once we have the 44 people, we'll bring everybody together at Fancher Davage Park where they're being stored right now. We'll do a little bit of education on composting and distribute them to everybody. So, we still have some available if anyone wants to give us a call. All right? I would also like to give a shout-out to DPW again. The other day when I was getting ready for work, I went upstairs and took a shower and I had no water. So, like, running all over my house trying to figure out what it is, I found out that the, one of the hydrants was being flushed, and I called DPW, and right away, somebody came back and saved the day, you know, stopped until at least we could take a shower before work. So, I saved everybody that I work with. Okay? So, thank you to Jacob and his team.
Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, reports of department heads. DPW commissioner?
Good evening, all. I just want to remind everyone that we're gonna have the electronics drop-off day for Saturday, as was determined by the common council. It's gonna be at 76 Monhegan Avenue. For any TVs, leftover electronics, you know, taxes, what have you, what you could not drop off before or put out during the cleanup week, you can bring it to our garage on Monhegan Avenue. That's gonna be a one-time deal. So, please bring it over. Don't leave it there so we can get rid of it for you, because we cannot pick it up from the curb side like we used to do in the past. It's not permitted by law. Also, as the spring and summer are coming, especially summertime is coming, and the grass is getting higher and higher, please feel free to call us to refer any properties with high grass or litter or any of that quality-of-life issues to us. We only have four code enforcement officers. They've pretty much spoken for throughout the year with their commitment, but we try to cover as much as we can. But all the time, you know, like they say, it takes a village, so we need everybody's participation and help to get it to our attention, any of these issues, and we appreciate that very much. Water system flushing, they just spoke about it. This week or early next week, we should be done with it, and that will be the flushing of the water system in the city of Middletown. I want to address also an issue with the water and the odor that we have in many locations in the city of Middletown. Unfortunately, it did happen during massive algae outbreak in one of our reservoirs. We acted on it as soon as we could, and we switched different water sources in there so that the problem will be, will not be there, and we tried to eliminate that reservoir with the problem, and we are trying to work very actively to get rid of the algae. It's just the, you know, that's the treatment system, and that's unfortunately what we have. And so, we went and we flushed again, once we changed the water source, identified what the problem is, changed the water source, and we had to flush again to get rid of what's left over from the water that had odor in it. Now, if anybody still has it, please continue to call us at DPW, and we're generating a list, and it's very simple. We go out there and flush that area to remove any water that has that problem out of the system. So, just again, continue to participate and let us know, and we'll act on it and try to solve the problem as soon as we can. And with that, I will stop. If you have any questions?
Any question for Jacob? Alderman Kleiner?
Jacob, quickly, we have that one resolution on Clark Patterson doing the study for the indigo. Are we gonna be able to make all? I know that has to be in by July 15th. It's a pretty tight deadline for what they're doing. Can you just tell us if you think they'll be able to get it done?
Yeah, that's the condition, yeah. That's the condition of the SECR. Unfortunately, we have to go, we have to just push hard and try to get it done. And, you know, I think there is wiggle room for the deadline, but we're not gonna look for that wiggle room if determined by the county executive, you know, but we're not gonna go there. Hopefully, we'll shoot, we'll get to it.
Okay.
With the SECR, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Alderman Francois?
As far as the electronic drop-off, what time exactly?
Thank you. Nine o'clock until four o'clock.
Okay.
Nine o'clock in the morning until four o'clock. We'll have people from DPW over there, and everybody has to bring an ID to make sure that he's resident, to show that he is resident, he or she are residents of the city of Middletown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Superintendent Parks and Recreation, or Recreation?
Good evening, folks. Couple things I have tonight. I think it talks a lot about collaboration that's going on in this city. One, I gave to you folks a press release to let the public know. The city of Middletown just got recognized in 2016 as a Playful City USA community. We're one of five in New York State, with the other four cities being big cities, Rochester, Geneva. So, for a small city, this is an incredible feat. Nicole, our new program coordinator, worked on an application. What this entitles us to is we compete in challenges now where we can actually get funds to enhance playfulness around here. This month's challenge is something to work with the downtown, so we'll be collaborating and talking with Bid and Community Development, maybe doing a little something with Jerry's Park, something that's playful in there. Maybe we have a couple of ideas, and we'll surprise you with them. We'll see what happens there. So, that is a great accomplishment. You'll be hearing a whole lot about that, and I think it's gonna help us really improve our park system and our programming. Another thing is, we're gonna be stocking Summit Pond, which is at Davage Park. Again, we're doing a collaboration effort. Town of Walk Hill also needs to stock their pond over at Circleville, so one of our guys and one of their guys will be traveling to pick up fish to come back and stock both. We also are doing some stuff with Sullivan County's water conservation. They just put out a thing that was in the paper the other day, and we can get bass at a cheaper price and stay closer, only go to Liberty instead of all the way up to Cooperstown for that. So, that's another collaboration between Middletown and the Town of Walk Hill. Also, with the high school construction coming up, the school district has asked if they could use our tennis courts so their tennis teams can still compete. I brought that to the Recreation Commission. Of course, they said yes. So, the Town of Walk Hill tennis courts and the Middletown tennis courts will be hosting the JV and varsity tennis teams. So, there's a collaboration there as well. You'll see a resolution tonight for the mayor to sign solution funding for 2017. In 2016, we did get in the high, I think it was $47,000 for youth programming. We're shooting for more this year. I'm gonna use the word collaboration again, because we're putting in three applications for our lunch program, our teen center, our summer leadership academy, but Jackie Welch will also be putting applications in for her Too Good for Violence and Too Good for Drugs. It was a pilot program this year, and it did very well, and I'm sure the county youth bureau will continue to support that. We're gonna also look to get some scholarships for the police academy, so kids that don't have the money to attend that can be scholarshiped. So, that is something else we're looking into, so there's a nice collaboration there. We also do things with all their community agencies, such as Cornell and Health Department, and we're looking forward to being successful on that application. Lastly, summer's here, folks. Make sure you register. Our camps are filling up. The lines are nonstop in the office right now. The deadline for the police academy applications are this Friday, so get that in. That boxing program we were talking about, it has hit the ground running. We have over 40 kids in it between clinics and things. If you're around Academy Avenue building like 5 o'clock on a weekday, you'll see about 20-some kids running around the block and working out, and they're there every day. So, we'll keep you updated on that, and soon you'll get to meet some of our boxers. It's a very good positive program. And lastly, you'll see there's a transfer of money in the budget tonight, and that is for outdoor movie screen. I want the folks to know that screen is gonna be, again, collaboration. It's a $9,700 screen. Half of it is being paid by the Middletown Cares Grant, because programs are alcohol and drug-free family events. A quarter of it will be paid from the Paramount, which will be used in Festival Square for movies, and a quarter will be paid by the Rec Department to use with movies in the parks. So, there'll be no more renting of screens, and it's a deluxe one. So, there's another collaboration for you, and that's what gets things done.
What size is the screen?
The screen is, I believe, 12-foot by 20-foot, and comes with the whole sound system and everything. And that research was done by Maria.
That's awesome. Any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Nice job. Corporation council?
Anything that must be questioned?
Any question for the corporation council? Fire chief?
Good evening, everyone. How you doing? Not too much, really, to say. We've been pretty quiet, which is nice, since it's my duty month. I like it when it's quiet. This past Saturday, we had our department's annual dinner. I'd like to thank everyone that showed up. We really do appreciate it. Hope you enjoyed yourself. Glad to see you guys there all the time, all these dinners and parties we have. Glad you guys can make it. Really, nothing else I have to say. Any questions?
Any question for the fire chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
John?
I just have one thing. There was a resolution that was added to the end of the agenda for tonight. I emailed everyone just to let them know about that it's gonna be an addition to the C-3 zone, and this is just the schedule of public hearing for this, and it's gonna be adding proposed zoning code for child daycare to the C-3 zone. So, everybody is familiar with that. And Mr. Gertner, I'm sure, if there's any questions, he can answer that.
Any question for John? Thank you, John. Okay, remarks of Alderman? Alderman John Francois?
Yes, good evening. I just want to congratulate the commissioner of securing the wastewater treatment grant, job-well-done commissioner, and also chief, I'm sorry I missed dinner this year. I was out of town. So, that's all I have for this evening.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. First, we had our citywide watch meeting on May 10th, and I want to thank Chief Beth and Court and Lieutenant Nuansu and Sergeant Stoban and Khalil. We had a very good discussion, and for people with a lot of questions about traffic and speeding and policing, I wish you had been there. I hope you come out to the next one. It won't be in June, but it'll be in July, and you can bring those things up, and you can be part of the solution, instead of just saying, "People are speeding." We know it. Chief Roan, thank you, Fire Department. It's always an honor to go to the Fire Department dinner. And I also want to congratulate firefighter Clinton Concepcion from the Eagles, who won firefighter of the year and was awarded, and it was Maurice Lewis from Phoenix Engine Four, who was the officer of the year. And so, congratulations to both of them, and thank you. Our Fire Department is second to none, and I really believe that. Since Maria's not here, coming up downtown, to remind people, because we don't meet again until June 7th, on May 26th, there's a concert on Park Next to Something Sweet, and May 27th starts our downtown concert series, so be ready, because it's coming up fast. Of course, on May 30th is Memorial Day, and we meet at, this time, at 9 o'clock at the park in Town of Walk Hill, and then at 10:00 AM, the parade kicks off and goes down to Thrall Park. So, if you're watching the parade, or you can be down at 10:00 AM and wait for the parade to get to Thrall Park, but come on out and commemorate and be there for Memorial Day. It's very important. Of course, June 3rd to 9th is Hoboken Film Festival. That'll happen before we meet again. June 4th and 5th, and since I'm on the committee, I have to say, June 4th is the Mile Classic, and June 5th is the Classic 10K. And if you can, get out, cheer, you know, it's, streets, get out early, because the streets close, I think, before 7:00. But, you know, get out and cheer the runners on and support it. It's always a terrific event in Middletown. And also, on our next meeting, I guess it's June 7th, I keep saying that, I hope it is, we have a public hearing on traffic, so if you have concerns about traffic and speeding, whether it's on Highland Avenue or anyplace else in the city, come out and be heard. Thank you.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. I would just like to, you know, thank the folks, the chief for the invitation, for the Fire Department dinner. Had a very nice time there. I just want to congratulate everybody who received awards that night, and I always appreciate the fact that so much of the department's history is always recognized there, when they're the 25-year people and the 50-year members and the past chiefs, and I just, I really get a kick out of the history, that part of the city, and I'm always honored to be there. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Johnson?
I want to congratulate Park and Rec for the Playful City Award. Sounds good to me. Anything that has collaboration and makes it more cost-effective and efficient, that sounds good to me as well. I'll join my colleagues in saying I enjoyed the evening at Coole's the other night. I always appreciate the opportunity. Yes, indeed, our next meeting is June 7th, and I want to remind the council that we'll have a economic planning development meeting at 6:45. We will readdress the issue of Energize, which was kind of a little deer in the headlights with the presentation last time. Once again, the county is offering this program. Both the mayor and Maria seem to be advocating that we participate. The devil's in the details. We'll have an opportunity to readdress that, so if you want to review your PowerPoint presentation. And we'll also have a discussion with respect to lot change lines for the soccer field project. Thank you.
Alderman Cassoon?
Good evening. Kudos to Recreation Department, all their efforts in expanding play in Middletown. I've definitely seen a huge expansion in what's available for kids, and it's definitely a great community to raise a family. It says this mom who just ran from one of her kid's games straight here tonight. So, your children will always be busy if you take advantage of what's here. So, if you haven't gotten the program and your kids aren't involved, get them involved. There's anything they could want. Tonight, there's a resolution to accept a donation from Steve Dodd Plumbing for Night Out. I just wanted to say thank you to Steve Dodd Plumbing and also to all our other local businesses who continue to step up and support this event. So, my thanks, and I hope I'll have support on that resolution. Thank you.
Alderman Burr?
Also, a big back off my fellow council people. It was a great night, chief. I'd like to thank you all, what you do, and all the volunteers, what they do for the city, and all the people that got awards. It was a great night. Then, also, in the park, Chris, what can we say? Just keep coming, coming, coming. We just like it. And we also, now, in all the local businesses, we all have that penny for parks cans in all of our businesses now in the city. Appreciate all your loose change to help us buy some park equipment. Thank you.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to accept a donation from Steve Dodd Plumbing, $250, supporting the Neighborhood Watch Program, and credit this amount to the count T-51.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize the treasurer to transfer $6,800 to cover the cost of Muguie, Hauser, and Etzel for engineering work performed for the Sterling Street Phase Two Wisner Avenue project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon to authorize Officer Gas to extend the property evidence room management training course to be held in Suffolk County, New York, Tuesday, June 21st through Wednesday, June 22nd, 2016, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $7,070 within the Police Department's 2016 budget to cover the first half of the cost of the 2016 Gem E4 four-passenger model for the bid.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $7,070 within the DPW 2016 budget to cover the second half of the cost of the 2016 Gem E4 four-passenger model for the bid.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to issue a travel allowance advance in the amount of $575 for a trip with the Mulberry House seniors to Olga Rojas, travel coordinator, leaving Mulberry House Senior Center on May 13th through May 22nd, 2016, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to authorize Officer Gas and Gallagher to attend the advanced latent print processing course to be held in Albany, New York, Monday, June 6th through Thursday, June 10th, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon to authorize Fire Chief Sam Barone, Assistant Chief Don Lewis, Assistant Chief Nick Barber, and Assistant Chief Robert Brady to attend the Firehouse Expo in Nashville, Tennessee, from October 18th through October 23rd, 2016, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 7th at 8:00 PM in the common council chambers for the purpose of hearing any and all on the issue of speed control options for Highland Avenue and surrounding areas.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Witt. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey, I'm sorry. President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the transfer of a portion of the Paper Street, known as Gavin Avenue, to the owner of 67 California Avenue, and authorize the mayor to sign the deed and other necessary documents.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?[1566.91]
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $2,425 within the 2016 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department to purchase an outdoor movie screen.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Rickasun. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt to authorize the treasurer to transfer the amount of $1,010 within the senior citizen 2016 budget for unemployment benefits payable to a past employee.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Rickasun, seconded by Aldman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois to authorize the mayor to sign the Summer Youth Employment Program worksite agreement with the County of Orange for the Bureau of Fire Prevention for two slots for the summer.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Clark Patterson Lee to provide professional services for the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR review process associated with the easement agreement for the Inagot Water Site, and to transfer from the water fund balance a total of $15,000 to cover this agreement.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman John Francois, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to authorize the mayor to submit an application to the County of Orange for solutions funding and following approval to sign any and all documents, contracts on behalf of the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Rickasun. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt to authorize the treasurer to receive donations from Clark Patterson Lee of $1,000 and Marshall Sterling for $250 in support of the Neighborhood Watch program.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Witt, seconded by Aldman John Francois. Any discussion?
Really quickly, I just want to say thank you to Clark Patterson and Marshall and Sterling. I was remiss in not mentioning them in my remarks, so I just wanted to say thank you.
One else? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Graham Cassun, the resolution that concurs with the mayor's reappointment of David Raymond to the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term expiring on May 31st, 2022.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Rickasun, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June 7th, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed amendment to the zoning code to add child daycare to the C3 zone of the city code.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Rickasun. Discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Does all for new business.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited. The claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Rickasun, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Move for adjournment?